I'd like to welcome everybody to our joint meeting. And during tonight's discussion, if anybody would like to speak, Jeff will have a microphone. We do not have enough microphones to go around everybody, but he'll have the loud microphone if somebody would like to speak. Mr. Davis?
Okay. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we also welcome everyone. And I'd like at this time to call it Nash County Board recess meeting back to order. Mr. Chair?
All right, now we're at the time, Dr. Ellis? Nash County Public School update. That presentation will... That's dangerous. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Steve Ellis. I'm, uh, I guess I was trying to figure out if I'm pre-COVID superintendent, post-COVID, or the new guy in town. But we have been rolling since we, since I started probably about six or seven months ago. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to present tonight. Commissioners, thank you for your support. It's greatly appreciated. Also, I'd like to say that we're moving in the right direction. I've got a great group with supportive of board members and my staff over here, teachers, staff members in the schools. It has been a very heavy lift since COVID started, but they have done an excellent job. And I also want to make sure I thank them right now. So in Zoom land and here, thank you for all you've done making it possible for me to be your superintendent. So we will move on. All right, so current condition, we're going to speak tonight. First one. Perfect. All right, so first thing, name change was effective July 1st, 2020. So tonight, Ms. Lamb is going to be passing out new logos for Nash County Public Schools. We want you to start the new brand. We've got a different color, so it's a different name. So we'd like for you to get some, uh, I don't know if I call them prizes, but some merchandise for you to have tonight. Dr. Catalano is now going to talk about some of the costs incurred with the name change.
Good evening. We established a committee early, I want to say about this time last year to begin the process of, or I guess to continue the process of planning for the district name change. With that came a lot of things that we didn't initially realize, like domain names and all of the technology behind that. Some things that didn't, didn't cost anything other than the time of staff to put it in place. And it seems like every day I get an email that says, "There's a sign at such and such, at such and such building that still has the Nash Rocky Mount logo on it." So this is, this is a work in progress where this total here, $197,170.42, is what we have spent to date on the name change itself. And so that includes a new website that we had to put in place, a domain change, a new district sign, or new sign outside central office, down to little things like our Title IX posters that we have in all of our schools. So the, what is not included in this total, because of the pandemic, we've had a hard time getting the, um, the materials that our interior signs inside the district office are printed on. We've ordered those and they should be in, but that is not in this total. So all of the interior signs and the painting to cover the red that was our, our old brand is not included in the total.
So right now, what we're going to do is talk about the COVID-19 and how we're moving forward, getting students back in school in our reentry plan. What I want to also go over is, like I said, the reopening plan, the timeline, the decisions and why we've made these decisions when it comes to metrics and things of that nature. We want to talk about some district data as how many students are actually back in school right now. And our COVID relief fund that the government sent down from state and federal monies, and we're going to talk about that. First, we're going to talk about metrics. Mr. Farro?
Good evening. Standing before you tonight to talk to you about our metrics. The first slide that we have is for Nash County. And this slide is as of October 23rd. And you can see that there's a positivity rate, was a positivity rate of 12.6%. At that time, we had 3,308 positive cases that was total. And 9% of the total positive cases by age was 0 to 17 years of age. And looking at Edgecombe County as of October 27th, the positivity rate was 8.3%. Edgecombe County had 1,944 positive cases total. 10% of total positive cases by age were 0 to 17. In North Carolina, 7.3% positivity rate that was pulled yesterday by Dr. Catalano. 263,833 positive cases total. And 11% of those were ages 0 to 17. Next slide. So on this slide is our staff. So what we have here is our total cases beginning for our staff back in August. And we also have it broken up, as you can see in the very top here, these columns from August 10th to 9/3, and then from 9/4 to 10/5. I think one of our columns is missing. And I'll go over that here. From 8/10 to 9/3. Yes, that's not a problem.
Can you manage to skip and refresh? Sorry.
Sorry. So this, thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, this is our staff slide. We use this data as we were planning for reopening. Dr. Catalano, I think we now have been recording this for about three weeks on our webpage. But this information was used to help give us information or inform us as we were working towards reopening. So if you look in the very far left column, 8/10 until today, our total positive cases for staff was 7/3. If you look at the total number for those who tested negative, 184. The number of individuals who were quarantined but back in school, 277. And currently quarantined, that would be not after February. And I'll talk about it when I get over to this side of the chart. So if you're looking at the first column here, starting from 8/10 to 9/3, there were 27 positive cases. There were 57 cases of testing negative. 54 who were quarantined and back in school from that time frame. And 44 as of 9/3, who were still quarantined at home. Looking from 9/4 to 10/5, we had 25 cases tested positive. We had 76 who tested negative. We had 113 who were quarantined but back to school. And as of 10/5, we had 58 who were still quarantined at home. From 10/6 until today, we have 19 staff members who tested positive. We have 51 who tested negative. We had 110 who were quarantined but back to work. And as of 10/29, we currently have 49 staff members who are quarantined at home. Excellent. Thank you, sir. So this is our student slide. What we've done with the student slide is we looked at Plan B, meaning those kids, students who were in school because of Plan B, and those students who may have been coming to school to test. But they may be in school virtually, but they had to come in and test for some reason. Or they may have participated in some sort of athletics, workout or something, and they may have ended up being positive. So our total numbers from 8/10 until the present who have tested positive, we have 32 students who have done so. 27 who have tested negative. We have 17 who have been quarantined but back to school. And again, with the currently quarantined, would not be applicable for our grand total column. Looking at Plan B, from 8/10 to 10/5, we had five students who tested positive. We had one who tested negative. Six who were quarantined and back to school. And then as of 10, back as of 10/5, we had 12 who were still quarantined. Again, those students, other students who were on site, again, that might be athletics, or they may be coming in to test. Thank you. They may have been coming in to test for some reason. We had 16 who tested positive. 11 who tested negative. Two who were quarantined and back to school. And as of 10/5, there were 25 who were still quarantined at home. Looking at Plan B from 10/6 until today, we have six who have tested positive. 11 testing negative. 36 quarantined and back to school. And as of today, we have 68 who are still quarantined at home. For those who were on site, five who tested positive. Four who tested negative. 27 quarantined and back to school. And as of today, we have three who are currently quarantined at home.
So you can see here, the timeline we chose, starting in August. August, all students were virtual, which would have been Plan C under the state plan, which is virtual remote. Then in September 21st, we did a Plan B blended learning. Some were face-to-face and some were remote. That only involved pre-K and ECE adaptive classes. In October 19th, which is just a few weeks ago, we then brought in K3, excuse me, yeah. And that was blended learning. That was face-to-face or remote. That was K3. November 2nd, which will be Monday, we bring in our grades four or five. You still have blended learning. Those who wanted to stay remote stayed remote. The other students who wanted to go face-to-face were allowed to go face-to-face. The board meeting, our board meeting on Monday, we will start determining what we're going to do with middle and high school kids. We've already sent out surveys, just like we did with the pre-K and K5, to get a temperature check of, do they want to come back? When and how they're feeling, especially staff members, principal, and parents. What I thought I would give you now is, so we are a district of about almost 15,000 students with about 2,000 staff members. So when you're thinking about what Mr. Farro said about the numbers. So right now, our total enrollment of elementary is 6,389. Those who chose in-person learning under the Plan B, which means they're back in school, was 2,476. That's 38% are in-person learning. Those who chose to stay remote is 48%, which is about 3,073 students. At this time, Ms. Jarrett, I believe she's, will discuss the COVID-19 relief funds.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay. Next slide, please. Okay. DPI has, or the state of North Carolina has provided, to date this year, 10 different grants of funding. I have listed one grant from 2019, '20, because when that was originally given to us in, I want to say about March, a little, March and April, we were given that amount of money, $934,913. And the termination, the term date was June 30th. Around 4 o'clock on June 30th, they changed the date, the term date, to 12/30/2020, which to, for DPI, they look at that as 2020. 2020, 2021 funding. But we did spend the full amount. That was purposed for child nutrition, school nutrition expenses, it all COVID-related expenses, and we did use that money fully in 2019, '20. For this year, this fiscal year, the total amount of 10 grants is $2,291,382. The term for that is December 30th, 2020. And then we have the federal funding that came at the end of last fiscal year and was rolled into this fiscal year. And that funding is in the amount of $4,194,025. That is, has the most flexibility, even though it's federal money. And it has a two-year term, where this will term December 30th, 2022. So the next slide will show you how we've spent the state funding for, that we received in 2020, '21, with the majority, 52.8%, spent to purchase computer devices. And included in that number is also the subscription for the hotspots to, for those devices. And you can see the percentages for, we had a grant for Dump Start for the summer reading program. And those were the summer salaries that you see. And the FICA on that, that was 17.2%. Printing and binding are the costs incurred doing that program. 0.8%. Contract services, and that could be in any of the, the grants that were, were provided, 6.6%. Instructional supplies also are, were expenses incurred throughout all of the 10 grants, 12.4%. PPE and sanitizing, those are items that were purchased by the maintenance department for their cleaning and sanitizing and the buildings. And that's 3.9%. And this is just some of the money for, for that. Out of these 10, those that allowed it to be taken out of those, as these grants are specific and we have to follow guidelines, legislative guidelines. And then we have the computer software, 11.4%. And then transportation, we did have some of that to transport food during the summer months, 0.9%.
At this time, Angie Miller, come up here and talk about this large number of school meals.
Good evening. We were taking on a new role with the school nutrition within two days of the COVID and/or coronavirus and shutting down the schools. Our staff was able to open up designated locations. Our numbers were extravagant at the very beginning. This number as of last Friday was correct. We get an average of about 20,000 meals a week at this time. I wanted to share with you that we've opened up 22 of our schools as feeding sites. The staffing has been those that are willing and capable to work, and they meet all of the qualifications. So we've been able to employ those that are willing and are capable to work. We did purchase some special carts that we've been using at all those sites as well, because they cannot use the cafeterias per our DPI guidelines. So the students that are there in the, in the classrooms, we are serving and feeding students in the classroom as well as running through the drive-through at all of those 22 schools. I say 22 because there are a few schools, I'm going to give an example of Baskerville and Parker are so close together, just like Red Oak and Red Oak Elementary. So we're able to shuttle food to those sites because of trafficking, that would be an issue. And we're also trying to employ all of those that are willing to work and not be understaffed. They're doing breakfast and lunch those ways, inside the classrooms and with the drive-through services. And as I said, an average of about 20,000 meals each week.
The next topic is going to be district organization. So as we move forward, we begin to streamline the organization of the central office and in our schools. And I wanted to show the figure tonight. We've eliminated seven district positions, total amount of about $569,000. This savings was used for legislated benefit increases this year from the state, that they increased our percentage of what we would pay in for benefits for the district. But that's the total of what we've saved this year in costs for district positions. As we move forward, I know this is a savings, but when we do a comparison to other districts with central office, a neighboring county that I know that I used to work for had about 15 more positions in the central office than we do. I'm not adding 15 positions, but what I'm saying is, once we start looking into the organization and how we want to streamline Nash County Public Schools, we're going to need to have some conversations so we can be on a level playing field as other districts, because we still are a low-performing district. And I want to make sure that we cut some of this, but also maintain, you know, a good school system. Next, Shannon Davis on the new school construction.
Good evening. Just want to give you an update on where we are with the new elementary school, where we are in the design process. As you can see, June 12th, the design narrative was submitted. The space was 90,574 square feet. The current gymnasium is 12,311. Schematic design, the new construction square footage dropped slightly just through the design process. Of course, the gym stayed the same. Design development submittal was on September 28th. Square footage did level out at 89,145. The gym stayed the same. Next slide. Where are we with the budget? Well, we had a $20 million target with the budget. Current project budget status, these are estimates, is what we, we feel like, 18,335, 897. These numbers were derived from either recent projects or calling around Oakley Collier, getting estimates, getting pretty tight numbers. Of course, we're hoping on bid day that they're going to come in less than that. But this number was not just thrown on there. There was some, some work derived in getting a, a pretty hard estimate. Owner contingencies, 543,000. The architectural engineering fee is a million 107. So the total project budget is 19,985, 897. Now, we do have some alternates, the repair renovations. This is for the portion of the gym, not, not in with the new construction. And I'll show you when we get to the, to the actual pictures of where this is, but the back end of the gymnasium, part of that square footage is in with the new construction cost. The 569,279 is basically putting a new roof on the gym, new lights, put new windows in, and mechanical system. We are going to use this as an alternate. We are going to bid it. We're going to see where the numbers come in. We may be able to take that out, use that. We may handle that in-house, as far as either bidding it or the mechanical work in-house using my staff. DPI intermediate, intermediate design review, that has been submitted. We have gotten comments. We haven't gotten anything from them that's caused any alarm. Public advertisement should be going out, hopefully, within the next week for pre-qualification. November, we'll receive the GC responses, and then we'll get pre-qualified GCs approved in December. Construction documents should be submitted by December 4th. And hopefully getting all the comments back, should be able to put this out for bid in January. We should receive bids in February and hopefully have a contract in place in March. Now, I'm going to step away a little. If you can see, this is just an overlay of the current... I got it. Here we go. As you can see, this is the current gymnasium here. We're tying it so the kids do not have to exit the building to go to the gymnasium. Once they get in the building, they will be locked down. They won't have to exit until they leave at the end of the school day. Playground areas are on both sides for KT, K2, 3, 5. This little section right here is where we'll bring in the buses. This little turnoff lane here is for ECE. We got ECE classrooms on this end of the building, which I'll show you. Here's the drop-off lane. What we did was we took the average drop-off from the three campuses, seeing what we had, and we made this as large as we could, and also possibly adding a right turn lane out, out on the, the front road. Okay, this here is just the floor plan of the campus. As I said here, the three in green are the ECE classrooms. We'll drop those kids off. They'll come in the building and have a short walk to the classrooms. This here ends up the pre-K, down to first grade, second, third, out the back, fourth and fifth will enter here. And of course, you can see a blow-up of how they'll enter the gymnasium. This section back here is the part I was telling you that we'll be in with the new construction piece. Just the main gymnasium is where, and the front bathrooms is where the renovation work that we would be looking at doing within-house forces or either contracting through our department, not in the contract. This here is a rendering. Basically, you can see here is the car drop-off lane, what we showed here, how it intertwines back. This is just another front rendering of how it would look. This is the front entrance. This here is where all visitors will check in. They'll be buzzed in, like the rest of our campuses will have the same lockdown system that we have on all of our other campuses, that we enter the office and come out and enter the classroom wing visitors. So they all will be checked in like all of our other campuses. This here is basically the intersection where I showed you where all the classroom wings go. You've got this section here goes back out to the gym. That's the corridor going back out to kindergarten, pre-K, and first and second. So the last group of slides is, so where do we go from here? Yes, I believe it was Monday, the Economic Strategic Plan for Nash County was presented. I guess it was to, uh, people in the area, involvement in business, and I kept hearing about Wake County and Johnston County. And I think in order for us to move forward and be competitive, like the fellow said, is we're gonna have to make sure we're able to keep teachers and the attrition rate instead of them leaving and going to Johnston and Wake. Presently, right now, the average supplement for a Wake County teacher is eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. In Johnston County is five thousand, four hundred and seventeen. Right now, our district average supplement is four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. In my opinion, I think that's what you'll, if we wanna keep teachers in this district, that's gonna be one of the numbers we need to think about as educators. The next one is, the state gave a three hundred and fifty dollar bonus to all teachers this year. It wasn't a raise, it was just a quick bonus for COVID, some of the issues they faced because they didn't get raises. And I, I enjoy when teachers get raises, I do. I, I applaud that. But they left out someone. And they left out those non-certified workers that were on the front lines, that never left, that served over six hundred thousand meals. Talking about school nutrition, custodians, bus drivers, teacher assistants, they were left out, they've been left out probably the last ten, fifteen years when it comes to a state bumping salary and raises. So we just calculated that if we were to give a three hundred and fifty dollar bonus for all our non-certified staff, that would get, that would cost us about three hundred and one thousand dollars. And then moving forward, I just think we need to start having a conversation as it's not just about teachers, it's about everybody that works for the district. And moving forward, we're gonna try on our team to do some of this. We've already talked about transportation raises, we've talked about school nutrition, we've done some of these raises, but things like this, we're gonna need your help. Because that's what's gonna keep some of our non-certified staff, as well as the teachers in this county. This time, Mr. Davis. All right, PPE equipment and sanitizing. We spent two hundred and eighty-four thousand, thirteen dollars and sixty-three cent to date. Uh, a, a, a good, a good portion of this came from scanners for the schools and ozone machines that we're using. Those are more capital asset type items. Uh, we got one of those in every campus where we can rapidly check temperatures once they come in the building. Uh, it, it kinda keeps from rainy days and, and, and other types that we can scan them through a lot quicker and have someone there taking those. It's a hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars for those. They are dual-use, post-COVID, if we ever get there, can be used at middle schools as metal detectors because they're dual-purpose, they take temperatures as well as, uh, metal detectors. Other, other expenses was hand sanitizers, thermometers for the buses and car check-ins, disposable face masks, sanitizing wipes, uh, Plexi glass that we've put in, in all of the front entrances, cafeteria dining areas, face shields, gowns, clear mask, and, uh, of course, the ozone machines, which we also will use post-COVID that we use for a lot of disinfecting, uh, classrooms.
Good, good evening. I'm, uh, Tremaine McQueen, I'm the, uh, Executive Director of Technology for Nash County Schools. And, uh, early this year, uh, due to, to the pandemic, uh, we were forced to adapt a new model of student learning. And that new model is, uh, you, you know, is called, uh, remote learning. So we understood that we needed to accommodate this new model and that technology would be a very huge part of this, uh, new model. So, um, our initial concerns were two things. First thing being student access to internet and the second thing being having enough devices to support remote learning. Uh, in terms of broadband access, uh, most of the rural areas, uh, had little or no internet access. And so we realized this and, uh, we know that there was a need for county-wide connectivity. So with that said, we've taken, uh, the initiative to seek partnerships, um, with vendors, uh, we made purchases for hotspots to accommodate this, uh, model. So through partnerships, uh, we have successfully, uh, deployed forty, four thousand and seventy-one device hotspots to our students. Um, if you look down below, you see the different partnerships that, uh, we have, uh, developed. The first one being Sprint One Million. And with this particular parts partnership, we've, uh, been partnership with them, uh, over three years. Uh, they provide us with free hotspots as well as, um, uh, yeah, free hotspots. And the criteria is, uh, they have to be free and reduce, uh, lunch, have to have free and reduce lunch. Now, the only criteria, the only problem I see here is prior to COVID, the, uh, hotspots that were given, uh, only had ten gigs of data. Now, that worked then because we weren't connecting to Zoom classes and things like that. So with the Zoom classes, it takes a lot of bandwidth, so it, it, uh, ten gig is, is not adequate for that. Now, if we move down to T-Mobile, this is, we purchased, uh, hotspots using the COVID release, uh, relief funds and we've made sure that we, uh, purchased unlimited data for them. Now, the Verizon piece you see, now, the state had a connectivity project called NC Connect, I think where the, uh, governor released, uh, some funds. And what they, they provided us with, uh, maybe six hundred hotspots and again, that is unlimited data. Now, uh, the next partnership is, uh, Project Ten Million. Now, uh, again, they provide us with free hotspots and the, the caveat here is we have options. So they can provide us with hotspots and the options are free, ten gig, and again, I said, um, earlier that that's really not adequate because of the Zoom classes. At twelve dollars, they offer us a hundred gigs per month and at, uh, uh, yeah, unlimited, and that's at fifteen dollars per month. So looking at this, this is another added cost, uh, in order for us to support the remote learning. Uh, as we move over to the devices side, we have successfully deployed twelve thousand devices to our students and we use our own devices. Now, uh, at our elementary level, uh, the devices, they, they are still in good working condition, but we understood that we needed to upgrade those devices. So, uh, this year with the COVID funding, we were able to purchase additional devices around maybe six thousand, uh, devices using the, the, the COVID money, which I don't have up here. Uh, moving on to the staff devices, uh, we have successfully, uh, deployed fourteen, uh, over fourteen hundred of staff devices. And, uh, one of the things that we've also done with the COVID money is we've realized that the teachers, uh, their machines were really struggling because now they have, uh, the Zoom classes and they had a, a lot more things that were taxing the machine. So what we, we've done, we use this money to also purchase upgrades. And what I mean by that is hard drives as well as, uh, memory, uh, sticks, so we can put in those machines to, uh, so that they can perform, uh, much better for the teachers. So we, we have that available. Now, one of the things that I really wanted to point out today, um, is the sustainability piece of it. So as we look at all of the technology that, that we purchased and all of the success of the technology to, uh, accommodate, uh, not yet, yeah, to accommodate, to accommodate remote learning, please note that, um, that all of the accommodation made for remote learning, we use COVID dollars. And the thing I want to, I wanted, uh, to leave with you tonight, that we did not, this does not, the number that you're about to see does not include our current operational budget. And, uh, and again, I wanna say, without this money, we would have not been able to really, uh, accommodate remote learning. So let's go ahead to that next slide. So this number you see right here, it is a cumulative of all of the hotspots, the subscription as well of the devices that we purchased for our students. And it may seem like, uh, a lot, and it was, it was a big help, but the concern now is the sustainability. Because again, like I said, I, we would have not been able to, to really accommodate, uh, this remote learning had it not been for this funding. So the thing is, you know, what, what happens now? So I, I just wanna say that we're real appreciative of this and I just wanna, just leave that with you.
Go back to the next, I guess, Shannon.
And what I want everyone to see is, you know, if, if we didn't have this COVID money this year, and that figure right there from, uh, temperature checks, the sanitizing, there is no way we would have that in our local budget. It just couldn't. And my concern also is, is that we only have about three thousand students back. And we start bringing a lot of kids back, sanitizers, PPE, all that equipment is now gonna be amped up because we don't really know because we haven't had our full capacity of students in the building, but I, I can't imagine what that might look like when we get Plan A where the majority of our kids are in a building. So that was one of our concerns because that's, that's a big number for us. The next slide, when we talk about the broadband devices, we wouldn't have had enough devices without this money. What concerns me is a computer's use might be two to three years. So we're gonna be fine for a little while, but when it comes to subscriptions, we can't afford to pay because all you have to do is multiply four thousand by about fifteen to twenty dollars to keep those Wi-Fi's active. That, that's not in the budget. In fact, technology budget from the state was cut this year because they knew they were pushing the COVID money down. So there is no technology budget from the state. So that's one of my concerns because you are, we are, uh, we are very thankful for this money, but it's a one-time shot. So we gotta make sure when we move forwards, we have something in the plans to be able to sustain the technologies, some of the PPE equipment that we normally would not, we wouldn't normally see a two-hundred-some-thousand-dollar price tag on PPE equipment, that's not in our budget. So I just wanna make sure we brought that up. So first, I just wanna thank you for listening tonight. Thank you for your support, county commissioners. Um, it is, to me, it is a testament to this county when we get together as school board members, county commissioners, and talk about the future of our kids in Nash County. Because in the end, all these numbers, all these slides we've shown, it's about students. This is what these numbers are about. And it's about moving forward as a district to get the best, to have the best, to get the best, to support the students in this district. Because as a superintendent, that is my job. I wanna make sure every day, it's not about numbers and figures, it's about students that come in our buildings every day to get a high-quality education. So thank you. Uh, if you have any questions, I got a slew of team members back there that I hope they can help me out, but any questions right now, we'd be glad to answer.
I think what would serve us best at this time, before we move to the couple items that the commissioners put on the agenda, is to take questions because you covered a tremendous amount of data there. Y'all had practiced this, practiced that about for a month apparently because you went through it very, uh, precise.
We did have some lessons.
Uh, a, and I appreciate that. But if we could pause right here and let's talk about what y'all went over and answer any questions our board may have, and if I could, Mr. Chairman, I think your people are probably more familiar with it than what we are, but, uh, commissioners, what questions do you have about what you've seen here tonight?
I have, uh, two questions. I noticed in your report, you, you're reducing your central office. What effect would that have on student learning, uh, providing the resources that they need?
So a lot of those positions, we're gonna push and maneuver that money into the schools. So instead of having them in the central office positions, we've moved coaches, things of that nature that can help more, well, it probably helps more kids because they're out in the school buildings, that's what we've done.
Sound like they weren't needed in the first place.
I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna answer that question. We got a lot, but...
I know you're not, but that's just the way I feel. Uh, the next question is on broadband. Basically, your report is about what's in the schools, right? Nothing, uh, related to the children at home.
Well, the hotspots, they take home. And depending on the service they have in their area, whether it be Sprint, Verizon, uh, whatever sales service towers they have access to is what they use. But they, they take those hotspots home so they can use them to have remote learning.
Just so all of them have a fair chance to keep up.
Other board members with questions? Mr. Outlaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I would like to just have clarification on. When you talked about the, uh, turn lanes at the new school and the fact that, uh, you would hopefully have a turn lane, has there been any discussion with the DOT on that? So you, you've already, you've already crossed that bridge?
Yes, we're, we're actually hoping, we will, we're hoping that maybe a turn lane.
Okay. I don't know that what we could do, but I know we'd be willing to, to try to help with that if we could. I know Robbie served on the MPO and I serve on the RPO.
Commissioner Outlaw, that is an item that was wanted by DOT in the beginning. I don't think, Mr. Davis, they ever told us we had to do it quite yet, but they always liked that. But we saw an advantage of it, uh, from a school standpoint because when we got to looking at the number of cars we'd be stacking from the three different schools, we kinda ran out of property and when we could see where we could use the turn lane to help with that stacking problem. And I have had a preliminary discussion with the board member, of course, that has since changed, uh, granted, on DOT, but I do hope that we'll be able to get some funding from DOT to do that. But of course, as we all know, uh, funding from DOT now is probably harder than at any time since I've been a commissioner, but we're gonna still keep trying.
Yes, sir, I understand that. Just wanted to make sure that bridge had been crossed.
Yes, sir.
And while you're looking at that, maybe consider some of these other schools that might have the same need. For example, uh, Cooper's. When you go out to Cooper's Elementary, it's, uh, in, in normal times, it's not uncommon to have traffic out on the roads and they're wrapping around the building and I've had people contact me about that, uh, not recently, but in the past. And I've been out and looked at, I was thinking you might be able to double lane it once you get on the property, I don't know, but it's something to look at. The next item I had was supplements. When you talked about the dollar difference in supplements between Nash, Wake and Johnston, you gave us total dollars. Could you put that in terms that we could understand it? What does, you're at ten percent, I think, total, is that close or ten percent of pay? Is that where you are with your supplements?
And it's based different on user experience, but you still get your ten percent flat rate.
I understand, yes, sir, I understand that. What does, uh, what, what we need to know is, what does one percent do to that number, two percent, and what would it cost for one percent and two percent? I don't, I don't know what it would do to it.
So I'm thinking Johnston County has about a one-point-five different percentage than we do. So if we were to do a one-point-five percent, which could have been a ten or eleven, that would get us probably to a Johnston County.
Okay, but you could probably provide us with, you're at four-eight-six-seven, so tell us what one percent, and if you wanna do one and a half and do two, just tell us what it would cost. And, uh, I know in the past, we've had some shared, uh, responsibility with that, I'm not recommending or advocating for that going forward, that's just what we've kinda done in the past. You talked about your, uh, non-certified staff, bus driver... You talked about your, uh, non-certified staff, bus drivers, nutritional personnel, et cetera, and you talked about a bonus, $350. Would it be best for those people if instead of a bonus, they just got a raise?
So we've already started talks about a raise and them getting on a scale.
Okay.
That's what we've already talked about. My concern was, it seemed like they're never getting anything that teachers now receive.
Yeah, I just know with a bonus, you got it and it's gone with the raises, it, it affects you further down the road. The next thing I wanted to ask about was your broadband initiative. Has there been any coordination or is it needed with the county on the broadband initiative that we've got? In other words, are we on the same path for the same expected outcome?
I know Mr. McQueen can answer, we've talked about the-
And I have, uh, followed the progress of what, what you guys have been doing, and what I understand, if this number is right, uh, once the project is done, it's going to be at 90% of all, uh, homes that's going to have access to broadband. Is that correct?
I hope, I hope it's that good.
Yeah. So the, absolutely, that would really give us a, a leg up if that is available to our students. Because right now, even with the hotspots that we're providing to them, they don't work in certain areas because they don't have cell towers. So that project, we're, we are on the same page.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, but I was just thinking it might be wise, since we are well into the broadband initiative, that, uh, you guys are well into a broadband initiative. Maybe we should have someone from the public school system to attend our broadband meetings to make sure that, you know, we're on the same track. Just a thought. The, uh, the next item was, you talked about sustainability for hotspots and devices. What does that look like in terms of cost? And post-COVID, do you still expect to have the need for that sustainability? Because this too will pass in time.
Mr. McQueen, you speak to the technology part, I'll speak to the school part.
All right. So from the technology part, I do think that, uh, this model's going to stay around for a while. When I say the model, I'm talking about remote learning. Uh, once it's here, I think it's going to, uh, stay here for a while. But with the cost, yes, I figured that question was coming tonight. So with the cost, what it costs us right now outside of what we are doing, it costs us actually, let me get that, yeah.
Well, I guess what I, I guess what I'm thinking is that, uh, I'm very hopeful that we've got a vaccine, and certainly by the end of next year, I would think that that vaccine would be available to everyone. So are you looking at sustainability for this online, uh, studies through beyond next year or exactly what are you looking at?
It, it, it depends on a lot of things. First of all, I think it depends on that broadband, uh, access when it's going to be available. Number two is how, you know, things play out, whether we're all coming back to school, you know, so it depends. But in the case that we, we are all still in the remote model, then yes, I am looking to continue the initiative.
So you could provide us with the cost for sustainability for, uh, the coming school year and I guess it would continue to be approximately the same for future years for as long as you needed it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, appreciate that.
But I think moving forward, virtual, a virtual piece in our education's going to be the way.
Well, I don't disagree with that, Dr. Ellis.
And the remote, the remote learning days that the state has now required of us, say if it snows, we're going to now be able to say everybody can remote learn. I think that's just going to be a part, I think everyone-
Yeah, I would agree with you 100% on that. Uh, the, the last thing I wanted to ask you, you showed a, a slide where you had, uh, I think Mr. Jarrett was showing $4 million plus in federal dollars through '22. It had to be spent by '22, I believe. Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Jarrett, you on?
Yes.
Are, are you expecting additional state funding for matters like this sustainability and other things related to COVID? I would assume as long as we're in this world that, uh, we would get more money from the state, and I expect we're probably going to get more from the federal, so I don't know how far out you're looking, but in terms of that $4 million plus, uh, has any part of that been spent yet?
Yes, it has. A, right now, a, a little over a million dollars has been spent for devices. That's, that's added to what I've shown on that state graph. And there are other, um, other PPE and supplies also has been taken out of that.
Okay.
Um, so-
Well, when you talk, when you talk about, so you spent a little over a million, so you got, you got what you got left. Can, can that funding be used for, I think you said you had purchased about 6,000 new devices? So can that funding be used for the additional devices that you need? And I guess additional PPE? And again, I'm, I'm just trying to understand it, and if that's the case, how far out into the future would that carry you back to the sustainability issue? I guess that's a, a lot of questions, and I'm glad we got it taped, and so, uh, when it's convenient, just kind of let us know what, what you think, okay? I know you can't answer all that tonight.
Can I still talk, respond? Can I respond?
Yeah, well, I, well, I know our board wants to do what it can do to help, for sure, but, uh, I just want, I just-
Well, the federal funds have all been appropriated and budgeted into the needs of various departments. So the sustainability that you mentioned, um, it, it can't be include, it's not included in that amount. We were able to purchase the devices and the subscriptions for the hotspots. It, it's, it has multiple uses across the whole district. It's not just for technology.
So what would, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't have the budget, the budget in front of me because that was created by the federal department, um, but it is, it is fully budgeted out.
Well, I, I know a lot of times when you get this money, it's, it's for specific purposes, but can you just, the final question then, could you just tell us what the remaining funds from federal will be used for and what can they be used for? Can they be used for the additional devices and PPE and that sort of thing?
I can provide that for you, and actually, as I said, everything has been fully budgeted, so there is no, it hasn't been fully spent, but it has, um, identified or, um, assigned.
Okay, well, just let us know where those remaining funds are going to, what it's going to be spent for.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett, appreciate it.
Commissioner Combs, you good? Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Oh, I, I have just a couple if I could ask. When you talk about, I, I'm kind of following up on what Commissioner Outlaw said about the bonus, uh. The bonus, as we all know, doesn't do near for an employee what a pay raise does. Our board, I think, made that mistake. We, we did that one time in the past, and I think I could say safely that all I was now realized it was a mistake. It wasn't extremely well received, it cost us quite a bit of money. But a pay raise is much better because it affects so many other things moving forward, particularly with career employees that plan to stay here until they retire, which we hope everyone does. But you use four categories of your non-teachers, uh, and if I could read my own notes, it was child nutrition, your custodians, your bus drivers, and teacher assistants. Is all of those equal needs? Can you take those and feed us some numbers of what we'd be talking about along what Commissioner Outlaw said on a 1%? And can we actually do supplements for those employees? I would think we could.
We could, we could put something together.
Okay, if you could put something together on that, i- in those four categories, so we would kind of know what we were talking about, particularly as we get into, uh, next budget year, I think it would help us a whole lot. And then, uh, the PPE buddy and what you got in your graph there about COVID funding per se, uh, will we spend all the money we're going to get state and federal during this school year? Or is it going to be something that carries us into a future year? And do we expect more of that to be coming?
So Ms. Jarrett, they did, um, extend some of the money till December from last year's money.
Right.
Now, when it comes to the state saying they're going to give us more, I, I have not heard, I have not had that conversation. I'm assuming after the election, there might be some changes, but they've already finished that talk right now.
So it's just something we don't know. Of course, we don't know when it's going to end either, do we? Uh, if no more commissioners, uh, Mr. Lamb, did you have any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, it works. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about the county's technology initiative. It began about three years ago. Uh, we did phase one, we're in phase two now. We've appropriated from county reserves, uh, over $2 million so far. The reason they did that is, we've all heard for the last 20 years, that we have, um, spots all over rural North Carolina where there is no internet access, and we can't get Century Link or, uh, some cable companies to expand it further than they have in the past. And so the county was forced to come in and, um, try to expand internet access through as much of the county as possible. Originally, that was for education purposes, but also, uh, small business purposes. With COVID, uh, I think we all now realize how important, um, with, um, online learning, how, how important these projects are. We don't know what's going to happen in the future with COVID. We don't know if a vaccine will be 100% effective. It could be two years, three years, some people say. So the commissioners did apply for a $2 million grant, and, um, unfortunately, we only got, I'm glad we got 800,000, but the commissioners are going to have to come up with another $1.2 million. So that's going to put them over $3 million the commissioners have spent to expand internet access throughout the county. I just, I, I do believe that both the federal and state governments, when they, um, write their next budgets or at the federal level, when they do a COVID relief bill at some point, another one, that there will be money for, um, education and, uh, online learning for, for children. Uh, I would urge y'all through your, um, um, School Boards Association to, um, strongly advocate that as well as the commissioners are. In fact, it's one of our commissioners' boards' goal is to get the state to expand funding for, for internet access. But when you talk about devices, um, things like that, I really think that's something the school systems can advocate through the School Boards Association to get, um, the General Assembly to, to really look at that and appropriate, um, those funds. So I think together with the schools and, uh, county government advocating, uh, we can get more money. We, it, it, it's a problem. Everybody knows it's a problem. It's been a problem. Access has been a problem for 20 years, 25 years. But together, I think we can, um, make a difference and we can get money from both the state and federal government in the future. I don't think they're just going to forget about it. And along the lines of COVID, I, I would just like to give a big shout out to this board, the, uh, the Board of Education, the staff, the superintendent, teachers, parents, students. My, my kids are grown up. I, I can't imagine what this school system and what every school system, but this school system and the, the teachers who are on the front line, um, the parents not knowing if they want them to go back into school or if they want them. That's a hard decision for parents, and, um, I think the leadership y'all have shown over the last six months, it has been recognized, and, um, I, I personally appreciate, um, the effort that, um, the school system has made. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you're ready, I'll go ahead and move to item four, or you, you old board have something they want to talk about what's been said here?
Any board member have anything else to say? Mr. Davis?
They had to be thinking quick. You didn't give them much time to think about that, Mr. Chairman.
I could, I could look at them and tell they're ready.
Okay. You can, you can tell they're ready to go, I understand. Uh, our board asked for two items to be put on the agenda, uh, and one of them is the Northern Nash Field House. When we last met together when we were working on the school and what model we were going to use to build a new elementary school, uh, your chairman, Mr. Lamb, brought up that sometime we needed to look at the last high school that did not have a decent field house, that we had three high schools that had a very adequate field house, and that Northern Nash was still using one that was built, uh, in about-
'76.
Mm, wasn't quite that old that time ago, but it's been a long time anyway, uh, actually been built since I left the city, so some, probably around '84, '85, I believe, uh, when, when the field house at the end of football stadium was built. But what I wanted to mention tonight was that our board, uh, has had some discussion on that, and as soon as we get this elementary school underway, find out what it's truly going to cost us, because we have all locked in on the design. And I will say tonight how much I personally, but also our board appreciates the opportunity we were given to work together on this school. I think it's gone extremely well. We have not met every week because we didn't need to. I don't need to tell you how good of a facilities director y'all have, uh, in Mr. Davis, but it has been very productive, ladies. Uh, I can tell you, we're going into it very satisfied that we are building an economical school, uh, one that, uh, is going to be very adequate, is going to look nice, but we are not spending unnecessary funds for anything in there. And by working on it together, uh, I, I think I pretty much pleaded the last time to give us the chance, and, and of course, the proof in this might is going to be the day we open the bid to see what the true cost is. But the cost is what it's going to be. Uh, we're in an environment of construction now where a lot of, uh, construction costs have gone up considerably in the last year. Fortunately, our school doesn't have much wood in it. If it had wood in it, we probably couldn't even build a thing as much as it has gone up. But all the items have gone up some, but what's even more difficult is to e- even be able to get your hands on materials to put it together. We're going to struggle with the timeline, I'm afraid, a little bit, because anything about construction that is assembled in any kind of a factory setting, whether it be appliances, whether it be the cabinets or whatever, lead times have just gone out the roof, quite frankly. You can buy it, the prices not all that much more, but the lead times have doubled and sometimes tripled. Uh, once it's a window in a house now, we used to get two weeks. Now it's taken us about 16 weeks to get the windows to go in a house. Uh, appliances, you can't hardly even buy them. And it's associated with things that are put together on the assembly line, so that worries, uh, us moving forward. But my real point is that we greatly appreciate the opportunity to work together on it, uh, and what the prices are. I think we both got stake in it by doing it the way we did it. Uh, our board's not going to be able to, and I'm putting myself on the limb, but we're not going to be able to say you spent too much money because you didn't do this, you didn't do that, because we did it together. And I really appreciate that. The field house, what I'd like to do is for y'all- The fieldhouse, what I'd like to do is for y'all to go ahead and be looking, uh, at how you built your last one, which I think, uh, Mr. Chairman was at Southern Nash Senior. You you redid that one and built a brand new one, what you did. And and I think we've decided in our brief meetings that that probably is adequate for what we want to do with Southern Nash.
Same full plan as used at Nash Central also.
Okay, uh, so maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel again when we do that. But if we could just, it seems like sometimes it takes us long to get ready to build something as it does to actually build it. So if we could be working on that moving forward and and if we don't lose sight of our budget too much on the elementary school, maybe we can move right into that as our next, uh, uh, cap or project, uh, over there. And that's the school that I came from, uh, as well as Ms. Davis. And I appreciate the gentleman that didn't come from there bringing it up and getting it on the table. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Like I said, Mr. Davis, I said I don't want it to cost any more than the one at Southern Nash and Nash Central, don't want it to cost a dime less.
Right, understood. With 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 the, with, he he said any less, so we'll leave the inflation out of it. Uh, that's correct. Yep, I I believe it was about 1.2 million.
1.4, I think, somewhere around that.
1.4, okay, so it must be 1.3. Uh.
Well.
Well, they all got one except for Northern Nash.
Except for Northern Nash, y'all about equitable.
Yep.
Orange is the orange.
Yep. The last item that we put on was a discussion on the Edgecombe County School System. And this was the difficult one. And I thought about it long and hard before I put it on here. But, uh, I'm going to say what's on my heart tonight about that and what concerns me. As you know, we went through a a rather, uh, troubling time four years ago when we decided to get the funding straight between Nash and Edgecombe County. Uh, that is behind us. Uh, we all pretty much bought into it. Everybody didn't get what they wanted, but it was a fair deal. And, uh, as it stands, it it seems to me to be working perfect. Uh, I don't see anything wrong with it. It can stay just like it is. But I keep hearing rumors, and I don't go by rumors, but I listen quite a bit. And and we've done, been through four years and really hadn't done anything. We're still sitting where we were four years ago about what the ultimate picture is going to look like. And as I listened tonight on the amount of money that school system needs, what we need capital in this school we're going to build, we got to build a house. But then as we talk about supplements and we talk about other things, and you're going to be asking this board for more money. Unfortunately, this board is going to be, uh, fortunately for us, but not fortunate for everyone. This board has a somewhat more ability to pay than our partner in Edgecombe County does. I just think at this point, we need to, and and I've tried to approach it with the, uh, commissioners in Edgecombe County through the chairman to decide what the future is going to look like. Uh, I hear one thing one week, I hear another thing the next week. I really just don't know where they're headed. Uh, if we're going to leave it like it is and the funding and and part of Edgecombe County kids stay over here, that's wonderful. I don't think anybody really has a problem with that. But you keep hearing rumors that they intend possibly to take their, uh, kids back, uh, at at some point in time. And of course, the statute that we adopted says how that would happen and could happen and what would make it happen. But if we move forward, every time we spend more money over here, I just feel like we're hurting Edgecombe County who may not be able to pay the same amount that we can pay. And what I don't want to do is to do anything that would hurt the children that are in our school system, uh, or in the Edgecombe County school system by us using our ability to pay more and taxing them more over there and maybe not having an equal partner. That concerns me. What I'd like to see us do is, uh, I don't know why we can't address this problem. I don't know why we can't form a committee. Uh, and I'm thinking possibly the two chairmen, the two vice chairmans, the superintendents of the schools and the managers of the, uh, two counties, and begin to sit down and let's work together on on what we ultimately are going to do. And if indeed it's going to stay like it is, let's make that decision. Then we can all start planning and doing things right rather than you getting pushed up in the corner. At the end, we've kind of wasted four years already. We could have been working on this. Uh, and if we use, which I've heard several times, that maybe Edgecombe is going to do by using the statute, and what that means is when it gets time for them to pay a certain bill, they won't pay it, and then it happens automatically. That's not the way we should do business. Uh, we should plan it. Uh, it's going to take a lot of work. Uh, it's going to take a lot of, uh, thought process to make it fair. Uh, we at one time had in the bill where high school students would finish where they started school. And that's not in the bill anymore. And quite frankly, I've learned that in the last couple of months. So it got taken out and I didn't rely, realize it had got taken out, but it's not in there. But certainly, I don't think anyone would want to do anything any different than that. So there are decisions that have to be made by the people that are elected to do that. So what I'm asking, not for an answer tonight, but if your board, Mr. Lamb, would consider us forming that committee, approach Edgecombe County, and try to work on this together and see where we are, Dr. Ellison. And if I've offended anyone by bringing it up tonight, that's not my intent. My intent is that it's just best to plan things, uh, do it in an orderly fashion. Our board will be as reasonable as we know how to do in working through this, uh, and whatever it takes to make it work for who we all serve, which in this case would be the children, uh, make it best for them. Let's get to work on it and do the right thing. So that's my ask tonight is for y'all to consider that. And any board member have anything that you would like to add to that, Commissioner Outlaw? I just hate to see us keep sitting and then it happen all of a sudden and nobody's ready for it, is what I know won't happen. And if we can decide that we're going to leave it like it is, then we can make a whole lot better plans on on what we need to be building and, uh, where we need to be spending our money on and so forth. But I'll leave it at that. Anything y'all want to add to that? Yes, sir. Oh, oh, they've had a lot of discussions within themselves. I I I understand.
And the discussion is whether they're going to follow the funding formula or take another route.
Correct. That that's, that's what we need to decide together so we can both do the right thing. Everything I know about is unofficial, Mr. Bellfield, just like, just like your statement. Uh, Mr. Lamb, did you have anything else you wish to say tonight?
Um, just real quick, I'm, I couldn't understand Mr. Bellfield. I I didn't, I missed that exchange.
What Mr. Bellfield said, like, was that pretty much what I said, that we are hearing things, but nothing official, that the Edgecombe County School was considering possibly leaving it like it is, considering possibly taking their children back at some point. Uh, a lot has been talked about, uh, but nothing officially. And and we don't, I know our board does not know what's going on. Y'all may know more than we know. I I don't know. But if we could form that committee and start working on it, it's got to be done better. Uh, and like I said, uh, look after who we're really supposed to be looking after. I appreciate you listening to me during that, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it back over to you.
Any board members have any more to discuss about that?
Well, you got a line item that is open discussion. Is there any more of that?
Any more discussion at all? I would like to say I appreciate our county commissioners taking time out to listen to our concerns. Um, I've learned a lot just trying to conduct a Zoom meeting with school board members, just like I'm sure y'all have with Zoom meetings with, um, commissioners.
We don't Zoom, we team, sir.
Oh, okay. But I I would like to really thank, because I've been thinking about this and I have had a lot of teachers comment to me. But I would like to thank our teachers for what they have to go through every day. Our central office staff, and like Dr. Ellis said, our bus drivers, child nutrition. They've all been working together as a team, starting back last March, and building pieces together as as rules changed, as goalposts moved. They found different ways and different things to help our kids. But I can't imagine teaching a Zoom meeting. I was thinking about this, you know, back in the old days when we had little Johnny moving in our classroom. You worked your rein off to catch little Johnny up. But can you imagine what a school teacher goes through now every day on a Zoom meeting, catching 25 little Johnnys up? That would be a tough order. And like I said, I've never taught a Zoom class. I hope I don't have to. But I'm sure I would have less hair than I do now. But I'd like to thank county commissioners. I also like to put a shout out, like I said, to our teachers and our instructional, entire instructional staff. This time anymore for my school board. And I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Davis? All right, any other comments from commissioners? Uh, entertain a motion for adjournment. Mr. Bellfield, yes, sir.
You mentioned quarantine in students. Are you doing that at school or they are quarantined at home?
Quarantine at home.
At home. Yeah, and the next one is you've spent $197,000 or some over uh, for the name change. And do you have any idea, and you said that you need more resources in order to complete it? Do you have any idea how much more you would need?
So that, that was actually in the update section, not the what do we need section. So we actually have some small things left that we've got a current appropriation for.
Any other questions this time? I will entertain a motion from a school board member to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Davis, second by, by Mr. Jenkins. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, I I would now entertain a motion for the board of commissioners to adjourn. Move by Commissioner Bellfield as their second, second by Commissioner, uh, Leggett and Commissioner Outlaw. Uh, any questions on the motion? All in favor, let it be known, we say aye. Any opposed, uh, can stay right here at Nash Community College if you'd like. Thank you all.